It just started.
Yeah.
Looks like that worked.
Good job, good job.
Hopefully Amanda can get back in at some point anyway.
All right, so again, just wanted to thank everybody for joining this afternoon. So I said it's a particularly where we want to be on a beautiful summer like Sunday, but here we are. This is all part of the process. Just a couple of things before we move on to the agenda for the meeting. I think everybody here understands the process, just about everybody who's in this meeting is probably followed along, at least to some extent. Just to reiterate what our job is here is we presented a recommended budget to the town budget to the town to reviewed in the town budget meeting. That budget was passed without any changes. It then went to referendum and was voted down at referendum and per charter. It's up to the Board of Finance to review the budget and present either the same or a revised budget to the town. At the new town, the next town budget meeting, another town budget meeting, which has been scheduled for Tuesday, May 25. If the meeting then passes a budget on, it'll go on to referendum if we agree on a budget there and we'll and we'll do this again. So that's, that's the process. Also, just a reminder, this is there are certain parts, I'm not going to go through the entire budget, I think we've all seen it. If you haven't, it's been posted on the website for quite some time. It's been covered in many meetings. One part of the budget that is not up for any debate or change at this point is the RAM budget. That is handled through a separate referendum. That referendum during that referendum, it has passed, so there is zero value, in my opinion, in discussing the RAM budget today. I would also ask that during the public speak sessions, we've got a lot of people in their attendance today who have already participated in the meetings. I think we pretty much know a lot of people's positions. I think more to the point is we know what the town's position was in the last budget. It failed pretty significant margin. We'll just say that. And so what I would ask is that we, in the interest of moving this meeting along, that if you have specific additions or new information that can be presented or should be presented to the Board of Finance, which is relevant, then we welcome your opportunity and welcome your input in either the public speak sessions on the agenda. I would ask that you not restate things that have already been stated previously. Again, I think we all kind of understand what everybody's position is. If you have something new or you've changed your mind or that, and we absolutely welcome your input, but I would ask in the interest of moving this along for all involved, that we do try to keep this to a fairly targeted discussion and keep on new information. We've got a lot of work to do potentially. I'm hoping this isn't a long meeting, but it may be, and there's just all part of the process, so we got a lot to do. Okay, that being said, I'm going to move on to item. I'm also going to state too, that we generally try to keep to a three minute time limit, and I don't always enforce that. What that means is that you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. I do want you to keep to that limit. If everyone's spoken and you have more to say, we can come back around to you. And we're not going to stop your ability to speak at the meeting, especially particularly if you have something in that you want to add, but I do want to keep to that one. I'm not sure that there's much value in going beyond that, but we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak and that we move this meeting along efficiently. Okay, that being said, let's go on to item, agenda item number two, which is our public speak. Amanda, do you want to go around and see if who's got input, if anyone?
Sure thing. Okay, first up for public speak is Scott Person.
I'm all set, Amanda, thank you for asking.
Thanks Scott. Jerry Kremay. You're muted.
Thank you. I would like to participate if that's okay. I come before you today as a fellow resident taxpayer and a senior citizen on a fixed income. I want to thank the Board of Finance for giving up this Sunday afternoon to come together to work on Andover's budget. As town residents, we must change the way we think about the budget. Realistically, we cannot expect the taxes will stay the same amount year after year. Everything goes up in price. As a town, Andover is a great community. We've all made the choice to make this place our home. As you discuss and deliberate the budget, please keep in mind that it is counterproductive to pit one segment of the town against the other two segments.
Right.
Senior citizens are important. We want them to be able to grow old while staying in Andover. Our senior citizens need and deserve a community center for which they have been waiting for many years, even decades. Will serve as a place for them to socialize and share a meal. Let's not pit the seniors against the school and the town and create competition for tax dollars. Children are important. Andover Elementary School is an extremely valuable asset to this town. Parents of schoolchildren will be the first to tell you that AES is a school that cares about this town's youngest residents, and it provides children with the best that education has to offer. Our school building and grounds are kept in pristine condition. Let's not put our school district in competition with the town and the seniors for support of tax power. Finally, our town's infrastructure is important. We must support the budget of the Board of Selectmen. We must take responsibility for fixing roads, bridges, culverts, and removal of dead trees. We have to provide Public Works Department with the trucks and equipment they need, as well as our volunteer fire department. We must provide the employees of the town hall. We must not place our town's budget in competition with the AES school district budget and our seniors. The solution to this problem? Work together in a respectful, kind manner. And any tax dollars spent for the town's Board of Education's school budget, the Board of Selectmen's town budget, or the senior citizens' community center is money well spent. Benefit all residents of Andover. Let's make Andover the envy of all small towns in Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Jerry. Next up Valerie Bruno. You're muted, are you all set?
I'm okay on this end, I have shared.
Thank you. Next up Joanne Hubbard.
Thanks Amanda. I'll be brief Mark, I think it's important, I know we've all stated our things before, but it's important since we're all taking time out of our busy Sunday to be here that we do get a couple of minutes just to address things. I just wanted to say that since the budget has failed, the townspeople have spoken, and I know all of you currently elected Board of Finance members, you know, wanted to be on that seat. So now it's time for you guys to do the hard job and I wish you luck. I won't join you till July, so you know, I just have a couple of things to say. So it's clear that we can't afford the 6.7% taxation increase. These are true numbers due to the loss of revenue that we know is going to happen, you know, with the surplus amount going down and the taxpayers can't bear that amount. So also, it's been clear from the beginning that you've asked the Board of Ed already to supply some scenarios. And I've called it a strategy in the past, and a strategy isn't a bad word at all. I use strategies all the time. So they're continuously not giving you anything to work with, so today's the day you've got to take the hard line, come in at a zero increase for them, they can do it. The declining enrollment can withstand it. If they don't want to give up teachers, they don't have to, have them find the money somewhere else. Again, when I get on that board, I'm not going to waste my time, I'm going to just come up with things. I want to hear from everybody, I want all of you to have input today. And then lastly, I want to address any parents that are out there, this is quick. Money does not equate education. Please know that you partner with your children. I work in a school, three of my kids have had 20 to 25 kids in their classrooms. If you send them to school with great manners, being respectful of their teachers, doing a good job, those teachers will teach your children. They will do a great job, so money does not equate. You start at home as a parent, raising model citizens and sending them to school. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you Joanne.
Thanks Joanne. Next up Kathy Plazey and Mike Plazey.
We're fine, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bernhard.
Good afternoon, thanks, I will certainly try to keep this as short as possible. So first, I am a member of the Board of Education. I want to start off by speaking as a citizen of the community though, and a relatively new one, having only been here for about two years now. I do fully support the Andover budget. Having come from another area which had relatively high taxes, I think the taxes are in line for what we're trying to do. It is imperative that we have a quality school. As it directs not only our families and our students who are currently here, but also as we have seen from some of the Facebook comments, those who chose to move here. But it also has a direct effect upon our property values, long term. And you know, I have family of friends with young children who have seen the impact of not having their children in school over the past year. And I think the fact that Andover Elementary maintained an in-person operation throughout the year demonstrates not only the staff members and teachers' commitment, but the administrative commitment to doing this in a well thought out manner. You know, and I keep hearing complaints from the town about budgets being impacted because we've not maintained roads or culverts, trees and stuff like that. And I get it, and I understand that, and that's past decisions that have been made. But if we don't properly fund the schools, then we absolutely will impact our students. And you know, I certainly respect Joanne's comment, but I do disagree that money does occasionally lead to better students because that means we can hire and retain proper, proper teachers in the organization. It has been demonstrated time and time again that if we do not provide the proper commitment to our students when they're young in research, that there is after effects. And you have, you have myself, I am a doctor of education. I know exactly, you know, I've done research, I've done this, you have Valerie, she is very adept at what she does and always takes the students into consideration. Now flipping over to my Board of Education tab, and this is speaking of me as a Board of Education member. I feel we have put forth a very responsible budget that is in the best interest of AES students. And I think that's the challenge, we've all put forth budgets that we think is in the best interest of our respective constituencies that we are trying to serve. You know, all of our working sessions and board meetings have had an opportunity for public comment, yet with a few exceptions, and Joanne has absolutely joined our meetings and provided her comments and very welcome comments. We haven't heard from anybody else in the community, for the most part, at those meetings about the conversations and the concerns there are. You know, again AES administration staff had done a phenomenal job in acquiring additional grants and monies to help support the schools. If the decision is made to cut the AES budget, you know, I as a board member, you know, will make the commitment that, you know, we will try to make it work as best as possible without impacting the students and/or the families. However, we have looked at the budget pretty closely and very carefully. And I'm not sure there's a place that we can make an adjustment without affecting the students and/or the families. And so with that, I thank the board, and you know, I wish everybody the best of luck. I know this is a tough decision going forward. And you know, we're here to help, I second Jerry's comments that we all need to work together proactively. And I'm not really sure, having been with me for two years, I have seen that. And so I'm looking forward to changing that, that way of working together. Thanks.
Thanks Russ.
Thank you. Kimberly Person.
Nothing at this time, thank you Amanda.
Thank you. Celeste Willard.
Thanks Amanda. I just would like to echo my fellow Board of Education members' comments. I think Chris and Jerry did a excellent job in putting forth the goals of our board. And also that unfortunately, there's a lot of divide in the town. And I think Jerry really kind of hit the nail on the head when he said, you know, we don't want to, you know, pin the seniors against the students and the students against the seniors, because that's not, that's not a way to run the town, that that's not a way to you know, to interact in the town. And it's not a that you shouldn't have to choose, it should be not so much of a divide. And unfortunately, with Facebook and the comments and the back and forth, I just think it's really kind of unfortunately gotten out of control and there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I really want to thank the Board of Finance for doing a wonderful job. I think we finally have some boards in town where people are willing to roll up their sleeves and do the work. And I'm proud to be on the Board of Education and whatever we need to do to get this budget passed, we will. So, thank you.
Thank you. Liz Lowkitt.
Hi, I don't have anything to say publicly, I've sent my comments to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for all you do.
Thanks Liz.
Adrian Mandeville.
Yeah, thanks. You know, I have to say, you know, I do appreciate the Board of Finance putting in the time. I, speaking as an individual, not as a selectman, will say that, you know, I I look at this and I am a little frustrated, I feel like we're pitting you know, we are pitting one side against the other, and that's, that's hard to, it's hard to deal with. You know, I have friends on both sides of this, and we, you know, I got a ton of phone calls this week. You know, people that were frustrated on both sides. But the one thing I will say, you know, I appreciate the Board of Education's efforts, I do. But I think they missed an opportunity at their last meeting on the 12th. You know, they realized they had $138,000 left over. And instead of looking at what they could return to the town, as even Ram did, they decided to spend it. And they decided to stockpile, you know, $54,000 in grants that don't have an expiration date on it. And then spend down to their 2% cap that they can keep if the Board of Finance approves at the end of this budget cycle. And I, I think that's frustrating. So they had grant money put aside for something, and they decided to use budget dollars instead, so they can hold the grants for later. And we're not talking about education, you know, in an abstract, we don't live in a vacuum. And so when we start talking about value of education, we're not talking about a teacher. We're talking about an outside classroom. It's not a need. It's a want. And I think that's the problem is that, you know, on the town side, we all see the needs. We see the roads, the bridges, the culverts, on and on. And on the school side, we see the needs, we see, you know, we see the need for teachers and we see the need for, you know, education materials. But sometimes it's those, those wants that creep into the budget that are an issue. And I think that's the frustration, I think a lot of residents, myself included, see. It's, it's that simple, it's wants versus needs. I don't think anyone should be looking at the school budget and saying, you need to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars. I did get those phone calls, I got those emails this week, and I candidly said, you know, you need teachers, you need a teacher for every class. You need Perez, you need some of these things. But I think it's unfair to say that you need an outside classroom. So that's, that's my take on it. Good luck.
Thanks Adrian.
Thanks Adrian.
Leanne Hutchinson. Leanne, just press star six, I know you're calling from your phone as well. If you need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I wanted to make several comments, I wanted to join other people in thanking you for the work you do. I'm willing as a citizen to do this as many times as we need to, to get a budget passed. I personally feel that it's going to take the equivalent of at least half a mil for the budget to pass. I've been trying to participate, I've either listened in on all the meetings that the Board of Finance has held this spring or gone into the YouTube channel, listened to them later. So I've tried to stay up on what's having been done. I will tell you sincerely and put that I voted no, both at the town meeting. Voted not to send the budget to referendum, and I voted no at the referendum. As far as what money is being spent where, I think it's a fact that the elementary school, the Board of Ed chose, was asked to go back and make a list of an impact statement, just like Eric Anderson was asked to do on the general government side. And the Board of Ed chose not to do that, as Adrian just said, they said that they don't have any wants, everything is in need. And I feel that that's a fact, that's not just my opinion, that's not a judgment call. That's something that the Board of Ed came back to you and said, we don't care to do. So I think that should be kept in mind too, I know it's an emotional, this whole thing is emotional. But as I said, I don't think this is a judgment call, I think that this is something that everybody saw. And that Eric came up with several dozen possible impacts to cuts in various areas to the general government budget. And that we need to see some more of that from the Board of Ed. I guess that concludes my comments, thank you.
Leanne, just press star six to mute yourself. Thanks, okay. Shannon Loudon.
Good afternoon, thank you very much to the Board of Finance for all of your work and for conducting this meeting this afternoon. And for everyone here taking the time to be here. I wasn't going to say anything in this initial public comment, I was going to let the Board of Finance do your work. But I want to now say a couple of quick things. I support what my fellow Board of Education members have said previously and very eloquently, so I won't reiterate any of that. But I think the Board of Finance needs four important bits of information. And clarification on a lot of misinformation that has been provided by members who are even on this call this afternoon. Number one, we have not had a decreasing student population in Andover Elementary School for four years. So please stop referring to that. We have had a stagnant population for four years. And we have had no budget increase for those four years. We now need, need a budget increase. Number two, I have reviewed the enrollment reports of Andover Elementary School going back to 2008. As far as the class sizes in Andover Elementary School. They have not decreased in size. They have not decreased in size. Since 2008, the average class size of almost every single year has been approximately 15 students in a class. So don't tell me, please, that while your students were, your children were students at Andover Elementary School, they were in class sizes of 20 and 25. They may have been in the upper classes. The average class size in Andover Elementary School since 2008 has been approximately 15, which is what it is right now. Number three, we are one of only five schools in the entire state of Connecticut that received no money whatsoever from the American Rescue Relief Plan. Please keep that in mind. The town of Andover received $319,000. I would like to know how the town of Andover is using that money, which is not budgeted money, not taxpayers' money. That's money that was given by the federal government to our town. RAM received approximately $260,000. That's in addition to RAM's having received S R 1, S R 2, and coronavirus relief money. So, number four, unlike RAM, AES has no capital fund whatsoever. We have no reserves. So last week, we did vote to put approximately $78,000 into our non-lapsing account. That already has, as everybody knows, because it's transparent, $180,000 into it. Why did we do that? We did that because in a year, if we have one outplayed student added to our student population by somebody who moves into town or by somebody who needs those services, that will cost the school $100,000. If we don't have any reserves whatsoever in our non-lapsing account, that screws up our entire budget. I wanted to make sure you had that information, I don't think I've talked about much of that before, and if I did, I apologize. Good luck to the Board of Finance, thank you for this meeting, let's keep it respectful, thank you.
Thank you Shannon. Paula King. All set. Thanks for being here. Mercy Minor.
Hi, I don't really want to say much, I've already sent my letters to the Board of Finance, but I did want to say that I want to say this is about trust. A lot of taxpayers don't go to all the meetings because they trust that, you know, that you guys are doing a good job. And we all feel that you're doing a good job, but there are certain times when things come up that they wonder, you know, is this really the best thing for the town? So I came up here because I saw a lot of bullying to the Board of Selectmen from other members. And to criticize me for not coming to earlier meetings, it feels like an attack to me. So please don't do that to me or to any other taxpayer that comes up late in the game. Okay, so that, that's all, I just want to just say, it's about trust. We trust that you guys are doing the best thing for our town. And as long as you guys, as long as we feel like you guys are compromising, you know, perhaps if there needs to be, you know, things budget needs to be constrained, like the the town, you know, obviously have tried really hard to keep taxes down, we're okay with that. We just need to be able to trust you guys, and that's, that's all it is. Thank you.
Thank you Mercy. Kathy Hartnett. Kathy, if you would like to participate, just unmute yourself.
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, I believe that's it, and I just wanted to remind everyone, if you would like to submit your public speak in written comments to me, I will put my email in the chat, but it is admin assistant@andoverct and just submit it by the end of day today. Thank you.
Are we through everybody?
I believe so, but Diane Grunier just joined, so if she would like to participate. Diane Grunier, we are in public speak, and your last but not least, if you would like to join. You're muted. We can't hear you.
Unmute, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the Mississippi, I'm on the Mississippi River right now, down New Orleans. I just joined because it's not the same time, I was waiting for one o'clock, but it's at 12 o'clock this time, so, no, I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set.
Okay, thank you everybody. So addressing my fellow board members, I think we all know what's in front of us here. We proposed the budget. It did get a fair amount of discussion at the town budget meeting, but obviously was not passed at referendum and probably most of us are not that surprised by that, given the some of the discussion and stuff that's going on. So I guess I'm going to open the discussion to the board members and see if anybody has any particular points that they want to make, or thoughts about what we, how we perceive here.
I'll go Mark. So I was trying to think about just how do we organize ourselves here and what are, what are realistic options are. And the way I see it, it kind of boils down to four different things. One is a further discussion on the revenue side regarding the relief funds. that we kind of put aside in some of our earlier meetings for reasons that I think were reasonable. But revisiting that is something we probably need to do. And then two, kind of three different categories of possible cuts to make. Uh, one, obviously, which has already been discussed back and forth in public comment, the B O E budget. Two, taking another run at the trooper. And three, town capital, which I know we're all very reluctant to do for good reason. But those are the only things I can think of. In terms of broad categories of where we need to be looking. Uh, if others have other thoughts, by all means. But maybe we can kind of go through that in turn and see what we can do.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I think that's a pretty good summary. I mean, there, um, just to be explicit, there's also the town operational budget. I'm, you know, that is an option to address. I would, uh, I'll stay right up front. I'm not in favor of that right now. I think that, you know, we've, we all know what the challenges are. And I don't necessarily see that there's a lot to be gained there without basically affecting services. We all know what we're trying to accomplish. We've been through this a lot. But I do want to open that up. And, and I would like to give Eric an opportunity to address that in case he has any further input on that.
No, I, I think you hit it on, on the head. I mean, of the four categories, um, you know, obviously the trooper is a controversial decision. There are people that are adamant that we should eliminate it. And there's a lot of people that are adamant that it needs to stay. So there's no clear guidance on that. Um, you know, capital in any year, capital can be trimmed. But just, you know, look at the long-term ramifications of that. Um, I don't really, I think if you really look at the operational budget, the only big decisions you could make with the operational budget would be the trooper. Um, or else something even less palatable. Most of what the town does is, you know, a statutory obligation. You know, we have to collect taxes. We have to have an assessor's office. We have to maintain a building department. We have to maintain a town clerk. We have to have a highway department. So there's not a lot that's really doable there. So from my perspective, you know, at this point, if you're going to do significant cuts, it's, you're either going to have to suck it up and, you know, eliminate the trooper or you're going to have to start reducing capital budgets. That's really all you've got on the town side.
Mark, you're muted.
Sorry. Keyboard, so. I said, do you have any, Eric, do you have anything else on the, on the relief funds? Any more information or clarification on that?
Oh, we did finally get some guidance from the state on, you know, what, what's spendable out of that. Um, I really need to sit down with the Board of Selectmen and the finance director, you know, and start, start talking about how that can actually be spent. Because those decisions really aren't mine. Those, those are really the, the kind of board's decision. And also your decision as a Board of Finance. But there's not really anything that we're discussing now that we're likely to pay for out of that. So it's not like I can just use that for capital. So I'm, I'm not sure that really does us any good pertaining to this year's budget.
Can I just throw a rejoinder in there? Because if this is the May 19th Office of Fiscal Analysis document, section six talks about storm water management. I found that fascinating because that line, to me, screams culverts, Eric.
Yep.
We have culverts up the wazoo we need to deal with. We have a fair amount in the capital budget now, I think, to address that. Can't we use that? If we could plug $160,000 in for our culverts, doesn't that offer us some substantial relief?
Maybe. I, I mean, I, I will tell you, I don't have a definitive number. I mean, if you want to roll the dice and get rid of the money for the culverts, roll the dice and get rid of the money for the culverts.
All right, I, I'm pointing it out just because this is the first time that I've seen a document that, where I could really line it up personally, just looking at it. You know, before, what we had was so vague and it was a paragraph. Now you have a document, a multi-page document with various sections. And some of it, I think, is clearer than others for us. But the, that really gave me some hope for the first time that we could find a targeted use for this stuff. And frankly, if I'm, if I'm correct, that that, you know, wastewater management can be used at a culvert. And the document says, I think on literally every page, that we're to have broad latitude in the usage of these funds within the right categories. Then, I mean, it makes me feel an awful lot more confident that we could at least consider that in the revenue side for, you know, to, to plug that in or to cut the capital budget by that expected amount. Because, and we have more than $160,000 in culvert work to do, right? That alone, if we're right about that, that, that eats the, the grant money. So anyway, I bring it up for that reason. That's the one that really piqued my interest. There's a couple of other categories in there as well, in that same document.
Rob, I have a question. Does it specifically say wastewater or storm water?
Storm water, storm water. That's, I, believe me, if it had been wastewater, I would have said, oh, we don't have a wastewater treatment plant. But no, no, it says, and I quote, where is it? Recipients may also use this funding to invest in wastewater infrastructure projects. Hold on, including construction, constructing publicly owned treatment infrastructure, comma, managing and treating storm water or subsurface drainage water, facilitating water reuse and securing publicly owned public, uh, treatment works. So to me, that comma, the first bit's about wastewater treatment. And the second bit is about storm water management. And those are two different things. So to me, that's how I interpret it.
I just want to be clear that a river is not storm water. A river is a water course. Um, I'm not saying that it's not possible to spend some of that money on some of the culverts. But I read that, too. And as somebody who put in and wrote most of the town's storm water management section of the zoning regs.
Yeah.
I'm not so clear that that is a, you know, that's why I said you can roll the dice. And there's a reasonable chance we can use it for that. But it's far from a guarantee.
Do we have, Eric, remind me one other thing before we let, you know, move on from this for a minute. Specifically in our storm water, you know, we have the drainage on various town roads and everything. Do we have work we need to do there? That would be maybe less questionable to use that funding for?
Oh, God, yeah. I mean, we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars of storm water projects we can do. No question. We've got at least a 10-year backlog of public works, work to address our storm water.
Okay. And as we speak now, in the current, you know, before this relief thing passed, how were we funding that? Out of Town Aid Road or something else?
Uh, mostly out of Town Aid Road. Frankly, what we've done is we've done it at the rate where the town crew can supply the labor. So we're just looking at materials costs. And the materials tend to be the minor cost. It's really the cost of labor. And we're just doing it at the rate where, where we can, which is, you know, generally speaking, one major drainage project a year.
Okay. So there's another potential usage for, for that funding.
Yep.
So if I, maybe I'm wrong about the culverts, but even if I am, I feel like there's another place to target that money.
Yeah, it's not that we're not going to be able to spend that money. The question is simply, can we spend that money to decrease our current budget? And that's the harder question.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, how does that help us in, in this fiscal year that we're trying to get past right now? I get it. I'm just trying to find a way. Okay.
It sounds like some of that. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, based on what Jerry said, I agree as far as, um, classes, not classes of people, but seniors versus parents and school age kids. That's, that's always, every time you go to, you're going to see that. You know, is when the kids are young and you're new parents and young parents, you want the schools to have more money. But as you get older, you don't need them. It's kind of a, a given where seniors want it in different areas. I feel this kids in Andover School, by staying in the school this past year, last year, is at an advantage. A lot of towns didn't have that. Most towns had to go to, um, online learning and all that. And it's been very, very hard for a lot of struggles for parents at home, for the kids themselves and the schools. And because Andover stayed in school, I kind of feel they're kind of at an advantage where they kind of went as normal. I know some parents had, they had the choice to stay home if they, that, have the kids stay home if they wanted to. But that was their choice. And I feel because of that, um, looking at the issues that we need to look at, by process of elimination, in my mind, it's kind of going down to the trooper or AES. And unless we can do, if we can possibly put the trooper on some sort of a referendum to have the, the town actually vote, do we get rid of the trooper or not? And just base it on that vote? Then, to me, it sounds like AES, we would have to kind of concentrate on that. And it's unfortunate, but based on what's given here, I hate to see money taken away from the town from, you know, the operational process because we need to keep going. And those are my comments.
Yeah, thank you, Louise.
Does support what everybody else has said. Um, I mean, we have, we've worked so hard on this budget. And we have tried to figure out a million different things. And it's not easy. There's just not enough money. You know, um, so, you know, I feel the town operational side is pretty bare as bones. I think we're really treading the line where we're affecting service in the town. I mean, I hear a lot of complaints now and a lot of feedback from people. Um, you know, the capital budget, we have these projects that have been put off. And we have a 10-year plan and we're kind of executing the plan. And every time we don't stick to it and execute the plan, we kind of dig the hole a little deeper. So, you know, we have a pretty decent plan. And we're very careful about the money that we put into those budgets. And we hem and haw over it, you know, and change our minds back and forth. You know, it's difficult. Um, the school is still at a four and a half percent increase. As far as I can see, that's the only place we have room to get money from. And that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else on the board care to make a, you know, general comments, input? Linda, David? David, unmute, go ahead.
Um, on the town side, Eric's worked, uh, really well with us, presenting some worst-case scenarios for, to cut different things. And the only thing I would entertain on the town side would be the trooper. And for the record on that, um, I was on the board when it was cut. Rob was there. Um, and, you know, the, the town responded in a way that they didn't want that. So I guess I would need to see some evidence that's what the town wants. If we're going to go that direction. So on the towns, that's the only area that I would entertain discussing.
It's the only area you would entertain discussing reducing?
On the town side.
On the town side. Okay.
And, you know, as far as AES, for the record, I'm not an educator. I'm a financial guy. And if you look at our surrounding towns, the student-to-teacher ratio is not in line. And the amount of money spent per pupil is not in line with joint in towns. Um, I think, looking at those numbers, those towns seem to get it done. They do a good job. I think those are some areas we need to consider.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Linda?
Hi, um, I, well, I wasn't here for the vote. I was in California, but that's beside the point. But, um, speaking to friends and neighbors, uh, it was the Board of Education. It was their budget, the Andover Elementary School, that they didn't like. And the reason it was voted down. RAM, look at the size of RAM, the number of students, the number of courses they have to offer. And their budget went up less than 2%. And I believe for the budget to pass, the Andover Elementary School is going to have to come up with a budget of less than 2%. That's it.
So budget increase of less than 2% you're suggesting there? All right, Kurt, you're unmuted. Kurt, there.
There we go. Um, first is a, is a comment, maybe a question to the, uh, the people listening. During the budget vote, why wasn't there some questions marked on the ballot regarding the town operational budget? Do you support it or don't? The Board of Education budget, do you support it or don't? And even because we're, we're into the, this major capital improvement pro, 10-year program, maybe even that on the ballot to get the, the total amount of people that voted, which was very high this time, as everyone knows. But to help us get a better handle on what we're doing here today. Can anybody answer that? That, that may be on the, uh, on the, on the meeting here?
Yeah, so I can answer for you, Kurt. It actually is up to the purview of the Board of Finance to have that option. So you guys can, even on this, on this next referendum vote, you are, you are able to do that. It has to be obviously a yes or no question. So you have to structure accordingly. So you can say, you know, is the town budget too high? Is the school budget too high? Is the, you know, do you support, you know, eliminating the trooper, you know, in oncoming budgets or what have you? You, you can ask pretty much anything you want, as long as it's yes or no, and it pertains to the budget.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that came from the, uh, whether it be the town clerk, the Board of Finance, or even the Board of Selectmen, so.
So you guys would put it forward and then the Board of Selectmen would approve it going, going forward. But it would be up to you guys to make the decision.
All right, that's my, that's my first comment. And I, I do agree with Eric in, you know, we need, we, there's two things. We have the operational budget, which basically is the trooper and the, uh, the rest of the town operations, including capital. And then we have the, uh, the AES budget. Um, and that's what we should be, uh, looking at today. So that's it, Mark, for now.
Okay. Okay. So we've got some general input. You know, I, I, I personally would like to know more about, you know, whether, how we might be able to at least contain some offset to our current town operating or capital, maybe on capital expenditures for the, using the, uh, the relief funds. You know, even if it's only 20 or $30,000, if we think we can, you know, get some, get some drainage work done that is, as Eric said, has been, you know, kind of, you know, years worth of work to be done. I mean, you know, that may well be, you know, even if it's just reflected in additional work or some reduction in some of the department budget, budgetary costs. And then we add some revenue line expecting that we're going to be able to use 50,000 of that, then I think it may be worth talking about doing that. I would agree with that. My personal view on the trooper is that, I think if we took it out of the budget, we risk having another budget failure due to that change. Who we and the Board of Finance would do that. Um, I think it'd be more appropriate or likely, maybe if we, you know, hope that somebody were to propose removing it as making a motion during the budget meeting. And then it could be voted on again. And then it's a, a larger group. It's not just the, uh, the Board of Finance. If we were to take that out and the budget were to fail, it would really muddy the waters as to why it would fail. So that's, that's a concern. You know, it's one option. Personally, I'm not sure that it's worth the cost of, of the state trooper to keep in there. But as, as David and Rob have pointed out, and, and I voted for it last time. I'll say, I'll say it publicly, I voted to keep that trooper in the, in the budget. But I'm not sure that going forward, that we really get the benefit out of it, that the cost represents. But it's, uh, it is something the town spoke loudly about. So, you know, I guess I'll say that. And I, I agree that. So, you know, I guess I'll say that. And I, I agree that. The loudest complaints have also been about the AES budget. There's no doubt about that. You know, and I understand that, you know, the, the, from the Board of Ed and Valerie's presentations, what we're trying to do and what we're trying to cover. And we're trying to make sure that, you know, we don't incur additional costs down the road. And then we're trying to make sure that, that, you know, we recover from the impacts of COVID. Uh, that the, the pandemics had on the kids. So I think we've heard all that and, you know, I don't want to rehash any of that. I, I think it's there. But I think what we also heard is that clearly the town had a pretty wide, you know, significant differential. Uh, voted down this budget. And uh, I think that it's fair to say that the large part was probably discontent with the increase in the AES budget. So I think those are, I, I think that that's my position. That's my belief, my view of where this budget is and, and where it's likely to go. Um, I think if we were to do what is in our purview to either increase or pass on the same budget onto the budget meeting. It's, it's, maybe it'll pass a budget meeting, but it's gonna get, it's gonna get turned on a referendum again. I think it'd be very naive of us to expect we're gonna get much differential. It's possible, but I wouldn't count on it. So I think that our job as the board is to probably, is to make a change that we think is reasonable. And can go to the town meeting and. Pass a town meeting and has a, as a solid chance of getting passed at the referendum. It's not an easy one. There's no doubt about it. I guess saying that, I would like to go back and revisit that first one about the relief funds. Eric, if you, what, what are your thoughts about, about any offsets we might be able to tackle, you know, there?
I, I mean, the only real way you could do it would be you could take it directly out of the Road Improvement Fund. Although that's typically used for uh. Predominantly for paving and for chip seal. Um, because what, where most of the little items in public works get taken out of. Is the state's Town Aid Road Fund. Because we don't have a specific fund for, you know, little culverts. We don't have a specific fund for guardrails and we don't have a specific fund for catch basin. So we tend to take all of those expenses directly out of the state Town Aid Road Grant. As do we take most of the materials we use, um, you know, like gravel and process and all that. For doing road, for doing drainage work. So the only real way I could see you doing it would be to. You know, reduce the road improvement budget. That's what you wanted to do. And then hope that you can shift and spend some of the Town Aid Road money on road improvement. By spending some of the Town Aid Road stuff from the, the uh, relief grant funds. Um, and that may very well work. I'm not telling you it won't. I'm just saying I'm not guaranteeing it'll work.
Well, and, and the also, the other question is really what's the scope of that change, right? What's it really gonna do for us? Maybe thirty thousand, twenty thousand, you know, I mean.
Not gonna give us what we need.
No, well, no.
It's part, but not enough.
And there are some other categories in there that I, a little, maybe a little fuzzier to me, but there's some stuff in there. There's an argument that some of the categories listed in that guidance document from the state. You know, we might be able to throw some of it at senior transport. Um, for medical, you know, there's a whole thing in there about basically helping people get to medical appointments or what have you. Uh, and there was something in there, I forget the exact term, behavioral healthcare or something that struck me as AHM-ish. Uh, uh, but I'm not, that's a term, I feel like that's a term of art that I'm not familiar with, so I don't know what to say about that. But there may be an AHM possibility there, because as everybody here remembers, AHM billing is now mostly on the town side. There is still a little AHM money coming out of school budget, but it used to be split fifty-fifty town and, and uh, BOE. And this year AHM changed how they build and building each town kind of to the full amount. We have eighty-eight thousand, I think, this year for AHM. Um, so there's another category, I don't know.
So the, I just want to point out one thing, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. But my understanding and reading through the stuff previously is that you cannot use it to reduce taxation. So you would have, we would have to make sure that whatever, let's say that you're taking it out of X-line. That you're not lowering X-line from any previous year's expenditure or allotment, right? Because if you go below that, then you're reducing taxation, so.
Got it, right. Yeah, thanks Adrian. Guys, just please uh, ask in the chat to be recognized. They just want to make sure we're on. And it was an appropriate comment, but just want to make sure we're all moving forward here.
Right. I mean, in the AHM situation, maybe it's a technicality, but last year's line item was forty-some odd. Right? Because it's the change in the way they build.
Yeah.
I don't know how that would be interpreted.
Well, it, it clearly, I think, doesn't represent the spirit of what you're saying of, of not offsetting, you know, the tax.
I know, I'm just trying to find a way.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
And you know, we, we've discussed before, you know, I am perfectly willing to try the trooper thing again. I just, you know, I don't have a high degree of confident, confidence that that's gonna be our silver bullet. So. In any event, we have this, in theory, we, we made a decision as a board a couple meetings ago. To leave the hundred and sixty K out of the revenue side of our budget, because we were not confident that we could use it. In some way in this budget. And so that's where we are. That's about what, half a mil? A little bit more? Hundred and sixty.
That one mil is two seventy-one, so yeah.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit more than half. Huh, you know, again, we can, we can cut the trooper. We can arbitrarily somewhat cut the Board of Ed budget. Because we don't know the direct impact. And we could, and or, we can cut town capital. Uh, town operations, other than the trooper, I, I honestly don't think there's anything there we could do that would not, you know, have an immediate impact. Service-wise. I mean, you want to cut hours at the town hall, you want to do stuff like that, you can do it. But if memory serves, when we walked through this with Eric in the past, it simply doesn't save you very much money.
Yeah.
There's just not really any money there. So I don't want to spin our wheels on that again. It seems counterproductive. So I think we just need to start thinking about motions, thinking about.
Yeah, I, I do want to say something. This is a bit of a personal philosophy as well as an observation about the practical approach to this. So, you know, sometimes we talk about the budget as if you know what, we need to have a target and we'll work back from there. And that can be an effective strategy when you're, you're struggling to kind of uh, reach uh, uh, some kind of. Point of compromise where you think it'll pass. And I, and I think that that's reasonable to approach. I, I do want to say though, that we could, we could cut a lot out of the town budget or wherever else. And there still would be a lot of angst over the additional spending in AES. And what we really need to do, and what I certainly, what we do in business, and I know the town is not a business, I know the schools are not businesses. But generally what you do in your budget, it's bottom-up, but it's bottom-up budgeting. And then, and what it means, you start from zero, you see what your needs are, and then you fund appropriately and see, and see what you're willing to spend the money at. But we as a town need to decide what we're willing to spend the money on. And um, you know, what services, if we're gonna cut, cut the costs or, or cut our budget, what services are willing, we willing to do without. Because that's ultimately what it comes down to. Uh, assuming there aren't, you know, some efficiencies to be gained somewhere, which sometimes there are, you know, we, we did it by. Using a joint finance person in between the AES and the town. And we, we did it in the town by combining some positions. So sometimes you can do that. But ultimately, you get down to which services you're willing to pay for. And I don't necessarily think that there's this magic number that we have to hit. That um, is, is gonna satisfy everybody. And, and I'm, I, I just think that's something we have to keep in mind as, as we go through. That being said, you know, clearly where we were is, is not, it's not gonna fly. It didn't, didn't go the first time. I doubt it's gonna go a second referendum if we don't make some significant change. So I, I do, I do agree with that. Um, so that being said, does anybody want to make a motion or make further comments on board? Diane?
I'm gonna go out there and I'm gonna make a motion, because right now, the way it sits. I don't have enough information about these relief funds and what we can spend them on. I think that's something we're gonna really look hard at into the next budget year. But I kind of did some legwork yesterday and last night, trying to figure out other towns have put that into their budget. And I couldn't find anything. I don't know if anybody's aware of any other town putting those into. Because a lot of the information's not there yet to make a decision. So, um, so, and I'm pretty much playing by the rules. If, you know, we have to follow the regulations, the regulations. So um, I think we've done a really good job of whittling away the town budget to basically, you know, bare bones. You know, I know we're kind of, I think we're kind of affecting services and turn times for the public on some of the town services. But that's what we chose to do. So right now, I would like to make a motion to reduce the AES budget. By a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That will bring their budget in a, a little bit less than a one percent increase. And as part of that motion, I would definitely like us to consider, when we go to referendum again. To have the three questions on there and talk about town budget, capital budget and AES budget. So we can.
Can we, can we entertain that maybe as, as a separate motion Diane? So I think we don't want to muddy the water. So, uh, can you give me that number again, please?
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
One thirty-eight. So you're, you're suggest, you're, you're motioning that we approve the last, or we decrease the last recommended amount for AES. From four million seventy-eight thousand eight dollars to, it looks like three million nine hundred and forty thousand.
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars.
Diane, can you just, just for my own personal identification, where's the one thirty-eight from? Was that um, based on?
That's me making it up.
Okay, darted aboard, got it, thanks.
It's pretty close to the, it's pretty close to the two percent budget that, uh, two percent number that Diane tossed earlier. I'll just say that. Do we have a second on the motion before we discuss?
Mark, I'll second for the, we can have discussion on the motion.
Okay, Kurt seconds the motion. Uh, let's go ahead and have discussion, okay?
My gut reaction, and it's just a gut reaction, um, is that's a pretty, that's a pretty significant cut. And I don't know if, what other people are thinking, but I'm thinking if we're going at this from, you know, if we're putting aside. The relief funding stuff, and we're just talking about cuts, I'd like to try and make those, you know, any cuts we propose to be, you know. Not just from one or the other, but you know, kind of try to balance things a bit. That's, I know, that's, that's a fairly large sum, but from, in comparison to where they are at now. Uh, from, that takes, as you said, you said, that takes their increase down to a little under two percent. Is that what you said? From a half?
It gives them, it brings their increase at, in around one percent.
So is it a four and a half, roughly one percent? That's um, yeah, that's a pretty big whack. Um, this is my gut reaction though.
What effect would that have on the increase for the, as far as the um?
So quickly, I did some quick numbers and anybody can check my math, because in case I made a mistake. The way I look at it, that would bring our mil rate increase, it would increase the mil rate by point eight five mils. So it gives you about a little less than half a mil. Decrease from where we're at and brings the total percentage increase to two point three nine. From, I think we're at three point eight three percent right now or something. So, you know, it's a significant amount of money, but it doesn't get us a lot of a reduction in the mil rate. But it gives us close to half a mil.
Half a mil, yeah.
Yeah, not quite, so.
Um, I have a question. Does anybody have the exact dollar amount of the proposed uh, leftover monies? Wasn't it like a hundred and sixty K? The AES was uh, expecting to have.
Yeah, I had that somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, Valerie's here too, we could always uh, ask her, but I thought it was a little less than that.
Yeah, I don't have it handy, you know, um. Now, Valerie, do you want, do you have that information?
Actually, it was one thirty-eight.
No, it was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight, yeah, okay.
Mark, before you move on this, can, can, can I just talk to one point?
If it, if it's pertinent, please.
Um, it's pertinent because, you know, I'm, we did discuss it at the last Board of Finance meeting. Um, at the last Board of Finance meeting, I brought it to your attention that the town had owed us twenty-one thousand dollars and had not paid that. Um, I, at that point then, when you were struggling as a board with trying to figure out how to put money into the uh, tree fund. I told you that um, you know, that hasn't been part of our budget for next year. And you guys had already approved as a board a hundred and seventy-five thousand to go to referendum. So with that one seventy-five going to referendum, I felt that we could very easily eat that twenty-one thousand. However, when we talk about the cooperative agreement that was agreed upon before I even became superintendent. Um, that cooperative agreement was made between the town and the Board of Education to, um, number one, create a position of the finance director. That would save the town money. You'd have that one director and it would have transparency. You'd have one person that would be able to be working. On the finances of both boards. Um, in the interim, it has saved the town quite a bit of money. Because the town hasn't paid one penny for that merger. The town has not paid um, for the finance director's salary. It's in our budget. They had, did not pay for the cooperative agreement and they did not pay for the admin software at thirty-four thousand, nothing. We outfitted both offices, the one at town hall and the one in our building. And made sure that there were laptops provided to both the treasurer, which is also the finance director, as well as the assistant treasurer. Which is in your building and is one of your employees. So I do feel strongly that that needs to be discussed before you vote to cut us a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Because although I had no intentions on us having to ask our Board of Ed to revisit that. That would be a scenario uh, that we would have to revisit, because right now we are eating one hundred percent of the cost of the finance department. That we've merged with you guys, which includes the salary and benefits for Sherri Holmes, which includes, and she is the treasurer, acting treasurer for the town. So the town does not have to pay that salary at all. And we ate everything as far as admins. So I would ask this board to consider the fact that we have already paid fifty thousand dollars and now next year in our budget. Um, have included an employee that works for the town as well. So I would ask that you consider that before you vote on this. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Duly noted, I think it is, or I mean. Hold on, guys, if I could, let me recognize one at a time. I just wanted to say that, you know, that is true. You know, that the, that the AES did absorb that, the cost of the software. And, and Sherri's uh, Sherri's uh, salary, I mean, that's this fiscal year. So, you know, and, and so that was, that's part of this fiscal year thing. It should be taken in consideration in regard to this fiscal year. Which is part of what we're talking about now. All right. Diane, you started to say something, I'm not sure who else is talking.
I guess I'm not, when this combined finance director position was created and there was an agreement put together. What was the agreement as far as cost share? That should be formalized. So if it isn't.
Well, I, I'm sure it is, but I think like, the, the fact is that the Valerie is, well, I, I don't know that it is. I assume it's between the Board of, Selectmen and the Board of Education. But the reality is that we have the cost of the finance director and the combined budget. You know, if part of that or all of it, which is what we're saying, is in the AES budget, it is something that should be considered. As, as an added cost that they're bearing that uh, they were not. On the other hand, they're also not paying for their part-time person. So it's, it's not the entire cost. But there is, you know, they did have Laura Edwards last year, so there is an offset there.
Mark?
Go ahead Jeff.
I would like to make a recommendation that the Board of Finance consider making a reduction to the town's capital budget. Related to the roads of about twenty-five thousand dollars.
We're, we're talking about on the motion.
No, 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 no. This is to offset the Board of Education's request on, on the uh, the finance director.
Okay.
So that is true and it was last year. But if the Board of Education is concerned that that money is not accounted for correctly. I would sit there and make a recommendation that you do that. I have spoken to the other members of the Board of Selectmen related to that as well. So I just wanted to bring that to you.
Can you restate that Jeff? What were you suggesting?
Uh, a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction to uh road improvement work.
To cover the salary of the finance director personally?
Primarily, the money is related to the admin software as much as it is related to.
You're talking about this fiscal year?
Correct, in this fiscal year.
Okay, so now.
Because, because my, my whole point, Mark, and, and very simple for everybody, it's all the town's money. I don't care where the town spends it, I don't, I mean, I do, but it is all of our money, so if it. If it's allocated to the Board of Education, if it's allocated to Public Works, if it's allocated to RAM, it's all our tax dollars. And I, I really have a problem when we sit there and differentiate between. Even money that goes here or money that goes there, it's all the money, so if the Board of Education. Sat there and covered those costs and, and simply said the, there is no documented agreement as to cost sharing or any of that. What occurred was there was a union position at the town, they covered one thing and there was a position at the school and they covered the other thing. So, I'm just sitting there as a, as a way to sit there and resolve that point and this should not impact your overall cut. Your overall cut should be. Where it needs to be because to get this passed, you're gonna have to cut, so that's, that's what I'm recommending.
Just for the point of order, such a motion would not be entertained at this meeting, it's not relevant to the, to the, it's not. Part of the agenda today, that's relative to this fiscal year and I, I understand what Jeff's saying, there is a relationship to the discussion. But it is really not part of the agenda today, they would have to be taking place at Wednesday's Board of Finance meeting, which will be held in just a few days. Uh, but we could certainly do so and I understand that it is kind of an offset to our discussion today. Any other board members? Just, again, trying to keep it to the motion that's in front of us, which is to uh reduce the original. Request of the uh, of uh, or the original recommended budget amount of four million seventy-eight thousand. Eight dollars to. Three point three million nine hundred and forty thousand and eight dollars. So, yeah, Rob, you were starting to talk before, did you have something else, okay?
No, at the moment, I'm still thinking. Or trying to.
Yeah, and, and I think is, uh, it was, as I stated that uh. I'm not sure that's, okay, we don't have a. I don't have a number right there in front of me on the increase, but. Any further discussion?
Mark, if I may.
Absolutely, Kurt.
And I, I may direct this to uh Valerie and, and maybe Jerry, Gramey, um. Just finding out in, in, in my research uh recently about this, the, the surplus money, so at least that's what it's called. Is that true? It, it, there's a surplus in the school budget of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars? Did anyone answer that for me?
That's what I understand, yes.
It was the unencumbered funds and there was a list, I um brought it up at the last board meeting. Um, as to where it came from, uh, because a lot of it was uh brought to us not as taxpayer dollars. Um, it was through grant.
Yeah, un, unencumbered basically is the same as surplus, so we all use a different.
Right, but, but I want you to know that it wasn't all money that came through from budgeted amount. Yeah, there were a lot of changes that occurred, um, uh, if you want the list, I can go down the list with you, but I don't.
No, I don't, I don't need the list, I just, um, base, based on uh, well. My long-term history uh in dealing with budgets and, and so on and so forth through the town. Um, I know all boards and commissions and I, I'll speak for the Fire Commission, we have a surplus left over in our budget, which we have had. Um, it automatically gets turned back to the town, uh, general fund and I think. Most other boards and commissions in town, also if they. Um, have a unencumbered fund balance in their overall or yearly budget or a surplus in their budget. They also turn it back to the town general fund so that they can do some proper budgeting for the next, for the next budget. Um, so, uh, and I also, is it, is it true? I mean, this, of course, you know, the rumor mill, but uh it's gonna be used for an outdoor classroom and if, if that's the truth, uh, or that. If that's your plan, um, can you tell me why?
Well, so we did discuss this at the Board of Ed meeting, there are that are not tax, I mean, are not uh taxpayer dollars. Um, those would be uh other grant funds, funds that came from other revenue that were not taxpayer dollars. Yes, the children are outside a lot more, yes, they utilize those spaces. Cause it's the recommendation to have kids outside and have them spaced. And there is an already started place out there that we would like to finish. We also would like to finish it because it's on, um, it's a perfect place for the town to be able to utilize. And that was the argument that I brought forth to the Board of Education, that that is something that everybody could use. But um, the hundred and thirty-eight thousand, Kurt, was not all money, as I said, that was taxpayer dollars. Um, it was grant money and it was other sources of revenue as well. So it, it absolutely, and that's why we talked about it at the last board meeting, it was not all from our budget.
But it's, but it's still, uh, becomes part of your budget, overall budget, doesn't it? Even grant money?
Um, no, certain grants do, if I go write a grant, I have a grant that I writ, wrote right now that I'm waiting to hear back on. If that grant comes in, um, since it's earmarked for a project. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be uh something that gets added into something like. I write grants all the time for things that aren't in the budget, is what I'm trying to say. One of my grants that I wrote is for something that's not in the budget, but it's something that would take place at the library. So a lot of the grant money that comes in, for example, um, a bit of the revenue that was referred to. Was um desks that was, that was bought with COVID money, uh, that was COVID relief money from last uh April. And um, those desks were not needed, were not used, uh, they were sold actually to another town. So that money then needs to be spent on the kids, obviously, but it was not ever in a budget. So, no, it wouldn't be money that would necessarily be turned over because that was given to us for COVID-related expenses, not to be returned to the town.
Can I ask a, a fun question on this, um, because some of this money was grant money rather than, you know, an over budget or something. Um, if it were to be removed, can, you know, are there restrictions on? Is that, that money's in the door, but are there restrictions on its use such that like we were talking about with the relief funds for the town? That if it was cut, that, you know, that, the money would not be usable for something else. Like if we cut your budget by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and you say to yourselves, okay, now we can't complete that outdoor classroom like we want to. But we can, can you shift that money somewhere else to plug a hole or not?
That's a good question, Robert, because I mean, the answer to that morally and ethically, we shouldn't be. Because we know how we got, for example, nine thousand, we got nine thousand dollars to purchase those desks. We sold those desks to another town and so that money, to your point, should still be used for the things that had already been approved as COVID-related expenses. And the first two tiers of that outdoor seating, by the way, that was done with a grant. And so, for example, I know that that was approved at, through another grant, so morally and ethically, I think, well, if we were to. Reallocate the nine thousand dollars from the desks to that, then that is still something that had been approved as an expenditure. Are they gonna come, you know, back and ask us, so where is this money and where are those desks? No, but yes, I mean, that, that is something that should be there. The other thing about the extra Kurt, that occurred wi- within the budget was it wasn't an over budget. Um, we had a change of staff members this year. Um, and when those staff members changed, for example, they budgeted in Sally's old salary versus mine. I make less than Sally made, so there was a little bit extra, cause they couldn't have known that, cause I started after the July one budget had already been passed. So there was a little bit in there, um, there was a change of a music teacher during the year, there was a change of an OT person that we brought in, a lower cost person. So, they weren't over budgets from last year, I don't want you to think that, you know, Sally and Laura had created a budget that had a lot of leeway in it. These were unexpected things that nobody could possibly have seen occur, so that's why I want that, that extra.
Didn't, uh, didn't Laura stay on longer than she really should have? Uh, as in a few months uh versus uh, you know, with, with uh, with Sherri taken over?
He did, and um, that actually part of it, um, she billed us and the town accordingly. So there were weeks that if she had worked at the town, um, helping them with an audit, uh, her hours were billed to the town. If she worked to help Sherri on school stuff, those hours were billed to us. So, the extra hours that um Laura worked were not all billed to the school. She separated it, she was very fair about that, she billed Eric when it was due to work she was doing for Eric. And she billed us when it was due to stuff she was doing on our end, so.
Okay.
Just, it just a, just a point, so, so you're, you were saying, Valerie, that I, I just wanna, this is a, a point of terminology. So technically, it was, we were over budgeted, but we didn't know, but you're saying it wasn't really padded, it wasn't like it was intentionally padded, it was just unexpected savings. So that it's the same, okay, got it, alright, so.
They were unexpected, for example, as I said, the music teacher, November, she was at this salary with benefits. The new girl that came in is at this salary with no benefits, so I had.
There was unexpected savings that happened.
Definitely was not stuff that they could have known about, um.
Right, and, and I don't think that's really, uh, decided to make, so, so I think that's kind of understood and we had some benefits on both sides that, that happened, so it's good. And the, um, and again, just to kind of get back to the, to the, to the coming budget and some of the comments you made, Kurt. Um, it, it is true, as we know, that any surplus at the end of the year, any actual surplus. Rolls back to the town unless it's requested by the superintendent that we. You know, we can do that two percent, up to two percent now to go to their non, non, non-lapsing account. Uh, but that's kind of a future thing, so. The, as I understand it, that money was, you know, there, they spent some of that anticipating the surplus. There isn't actually a surplus, cause we haven't reached the end of the fiscal year, so, you know, calling it a surplus, it's, it's, it certainly. Was extra money from savings and stuff that they apparently opted to spend, so that was kind of what the nature that was. But yeah, if there were any, to be any actual surplus, then it would roll back to the town unless we allowed up that two percent to go back into.
And then I'll mute myself, is the biggest savings in that, believe it or not, was. Remember at the beginning of the year, I did announce that I, I cut a bus because parents were so helpful. That they were going to drive their children and we rerouted and things like that, that saved us thirty thousand dollars. So, that was, yes, right, so again, these were not things that were padded in there, they were changes that I made to try to, to save money. That I didn't realize I must have done a good job, because at the end of the year now, we have that money sitting there. And now we have to take a look at, you know, what sorts, what is the best way to, to utilize that. And as I said, a couple of the decisions I felt would be a benefit to the town as well.
Right, Valerie, while you mentioned the buses, um, and it's just a, a thought, I mean. Uh, what's the projection for next year? I, I watched the high school and elementary school buses go by my house with. Three and four students on board each way, um.
But you still gotta have buses, right, so.
I understand that, but I mean, what's, what's the? Yeah, does it hopefully go back to normal or, or what?
Think Kurt, I think it will go back to normal and so, you know, we have to project based on what the state has told us. And the fact that we are in full in person, no remote, we have to um budget for the four buses again. Um, you know, we absolutely have to, uh, for the four buses again, because uh, we're, we're, we're gonna be as normal as we can again next year, so. Um, you know, that's something that has to be there.
I mean, I, I can just say, just Kurt, you know, uh, you know, I'm a parent, I'm working, uh, I've been working from home during the pandemic, but that is going to come to a close. The unofficial word, corporate has not laid down the law yet, but the unofficial word is come September, which. I always thought was gonna be the case, lining up with the start of the school year, they're gonna bring us back to the office at least three days a week, so at that point. A lot of parents are gonna stop, I, I've always driven my kids to school, cause I live a mile from the school, so, and it was on my way out anyway. But a lot of parents are gonna go, probably go back to the before situation, put their kids back on the bus, so. Uh, I don't think you can responsibly budget for three buses, just crossing your fingers and hoping that.
I did, I didn't make that suggestion, I just wanted to. Was my next year, yeah. I wasn't saying cut buses, I'm just letting you know that, right now, the, the four we have are empty, so.
That happens, let's uh. Alright, guys, I'd like to keep the discussion, if we could, on the motion at hand, um, understanding that we were asking for some clarification, so I, I know that that was part of it, so. Alright, um, and I hate to, again, I didn't need, I don't wanna derail this at all, Jeff McGuire, are you still available? I'd like to ask you a question about what you were proposing earlier, I may have misunderstood it.
Yes.
Were you, were you proposing that for the future? For next year's budget, we reduce some of the town road funds in order to cover? The, the salary of the finance director, you're talking about this year, this capital year, this fiscal year, right?
No, I, I'm talking about this budget you're discussing right now, to make an adjustment to the capital funds budgeted for town for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, i- it essentially is, is an opportunity to cost share.
Correct.
Okay.
Wouldn't we also need to?
That would be a separate motion, but just, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were suggesting before. Thank you, Eric, um, so what, what, but, and, and this is not relative to this motion, this is not the motion on the table, but what. Jeff is suggesting is we can make another motion to reduce the town aid road fund and then thereby uh add a line potentially to cover the uh cost of the. Uh, of the uh.
The finance director.
Salary.
Merger work, yeah, I, that was always, that was what I was kind of trying to point out, is we need to, we kind of need a two-parter. Yeah, you, you make the cut and then you authorize the payment.
Yeah.
Right, back to the school.
Um, sorry, Mark, just make your cut to the school for what you need to make it, but take into account that. The Board of Selectmen or, you know, we're asking you to make another motion to cut twenty-five thousand dollars from the capital for the town. As an additional reduction. Does that make sense to you guys? It's all the same pot of money. Make, if you think the cut should be two hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars, I don't care where you go. Take twenty-five thousand dollars out of that town's capital side.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, we have the motion at hand, we have any further discussion? Linda, Dave, Louise, any? Think, well. Particular comments on this, if you don't, that's fine.
And I'm gonna make is basically uh, what Diane's proposing. We can look at it this way, is that the proposed extra funds or return of the town like Ram did. That's basically what, way I, I kind of see what she's asking for here, that's all I'm gonna say.
I'll just say, you know, my gut reaction to this is, um. The, the, if, if you allow, if, if the decision was made, that two percent rule, I believe is about seventy-eight thousand. Um, so just, I just wanna point out that if you were to looking for a way to do this in a more moderate fashion. What you could say is, keep the seventy-eight, the difference between seventy-eight. And one thirty-eight is sixty, right? So that would be another potential number, for those of us who may be finding one thirty-eight a, a large one, I'll leave it at that for the moment. If that made sense, I hope that made sense.
You, could you restate that, Rob?
What I'm saying is, okay, so you had the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar surplus, as you know, the, the Board of Ed is, I think, subject to approval by the town. Able to keep two percent in the surplus to put aside for future needs, because they don't, a, a, as has been pointed out, they don't have a capital fund or anything like that. So, that two percent of the prior year's budget, I think equates to about seventy-eight thousand dollars, right? Of the one thirty-eight, seventy-eight would be allowable under that two percent number, right? The difference between seventy-eight and one thirty-eight, so sort of the extra above and beyond surplus, if you will, was sixty. Correct, if I'm doing my math right, uh, hopefully I can do math on a Sunday afternoon. So, if you're looking for a number, all of these numbers are somewhat arbitrary, if you're looking for a number that you think, you know, one thirty-eight's too high. Those of us who might be struggling with that a little bit, there's another number sitting right there, and that's the sixty, just throwing that out there as an option. But before we vote on this one.
Alright, any further discussion by the board on this motion?
Actually, we could also, one other suggestion is to go one thirty-eight minus the twenty-five that we just discussed, that Jeff just discussed. That might be another option. Just a thought.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, just to uh restate the motion, the motion on the table is to reduce the recommended budget to three million nine hundred and forty thousand. Okay, just to uh restate the motion, the motion on the table is to reduce the recommended budget to three million nine hundred and forty thousand. And eight dollars. That is a about one percent increase over last year. Um, we'll go ahead and call a vote. Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, it looks like we have Kurt, Diane, Linda, and David.
Correct.
Voting for.
Me too.
Also. Louise, Kurt, Diane, David, and Linda voting for. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, Rob, uh, nay, and I'm going to abstain from this vote. Okay, so the motion passes. The line item for the AES budget will be set at three million nine hundred and forty thousand and eight. Okay, thank you. Um, move on to any other discussion or motions. Uh, Jeff had made a suggestion that we also reduce the uh the town capital expenditures. For the road work by about twenty five thousand dollars, having discussed it with the Board of Selectmen. And.
Mark. I'd like to make a motion before we talk about Jeff's suggestion.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, I want to make a motion to have four questions uh. On the town um. Basically, if you guys want to rephrase them, I'll just kind of give you the gist of it. Um. Well, the first question would be, is AES budget too high? Yes or no? Second question would be, should trooper be cut to lower town budget? Yes or no? Uh, third question should be, should town cut services? Yes or?
What? Should town cut services to lower the budget? Is that?
Yeah, exactly. And then um the last and final question should be uh. Should capital improvements be cut to lower the town budget? Yes or no? Uh, if you think those should be worded differently, the rest of the board, that that's fine.
I think that pretty much covers the categories, though, that. I agree, we we should get that on there.
I want to get it where the towns are, um, because if this budget fails again. We gotta kind of, we need to kind of know where uh the town wants stuff cut.
We need guidance. I agree.
Mark, I'll second Dave's motion also.
Oh, right.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt. So Kurt seconded the motion. And uh, so Dave explained it basically idea that if if this motion. We're not to pass. Then we would have some data and information about where the voters in particular were willing to cut additional. Uh, in order to uh have a a budget or produce taxes, really. Which even if it does pass, this will give us some interesting insight, I think. Further discussion on that? I think it's a good idea. Uh, I think we may want to word the questions. I think we can work with the Board of Selectmen to do so to to make it pretty clear, but I think we should keep it fairly simple. Uh, we may need to put some explanations in the uh in the lines, you know, explain, for example, capital expenditures would be things like road improvements, etc. Just to make sure people understand what we're talking about.
I have a thought on that. Uh, Mark, what we might want to do is you can add it, maybe add a parenthetical of the sort of the total. Cost of that category. So the AES, suppose AES budget is three million nine hundred thousand, yada yada. That can be in parenthetical, like that's what that costs. Capital, our total capital expenditure proposed in this budget is X. Trooper, the trooper line item in the budget is X. So with these question, you have right there for the the person trying to answer it, what the raw dollar cost is. That I I think that would be helpful to somebody trying to make that call right there.
Yeah, I I think I think when we when we decide, we work with the Board of Selectmen and the best. You know, wording for that particular, for those uh questions. It it may well be done. I thi- it it does make sense to provide context, as long as you don't make it too complicated.
That was that was gonna be my statement, Mark. I mean, that you you don't want to write a novel on the ballot because then the people aren't gonna mark anything. So I think you want to, you want to keep it uh uh simple and as as simple as possible.
I want to keep it simple, too. That's why I'm just saying a parenthetical with the number. To me.
Currently, you know, the the state trooper is currently a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, which represents X percent of the budget.
Right.
And potential savings then would be the entire amount. So we see it gets a little complicated because nobody's gonna want to reduce the entire road thing. But you figure the state troopers and all or none type thing.
Right.
And and people will probably figure that out. I think it's still worth doing.
Do we want to entertain an amendment to this motion to include one more question regarding? I know that. Here today, it's pointless to talk about RAM because RAM is done this year. But if we're looking at this from the standpoint of going forward and what we need to do and getting gathering information, do we want to ask about the RAM budget as well?
Do you want to make a motion to add a question about the RAM budget to the to the current motion?
I mean, the problem, the only worry I have with adding it.
Do you want to make a motion, Rob, to add that to the to this question or just throw it out there for?
I'm throwing it out there because I'm I have, I could kind of argue this either way. Uh, the the downside I see here is that it could confuse somebody. Like RAM is locked in this year. We're done. We can't do anything about RAM this year. Whereas a voter could realistically look at those questions, you know, voting down the budget in the next referendum and say. You know, AES is um. You know, actually too low, so I'm voting no. Actually, we might want to have, the item I might want to say is, not to say is the is the AES budget too high. It's just, you know, is it too high? Just right, too low, three options. But um. You know, if you put RAM in there, they might erroneously that something that can be done about the RAM budget at this point, and it can't. Not for this year.
I think it's gonna be confusing, actually, because.
RAM doesn't pertain to our referendum right now. So I mean.
No, not right now. It's it's useful information maybe for the future, but you're right. And I'm and I'm I'm sort of talking myself around in circle here. I apologize.
Brainstorming, okay.
I think it's, I think it just muddies the water, Rob, because we we want this information in case um the voted down.
Yeah, I tend to agree. Let's let's focus on the task at hand. Further discussion on the motion to add the four questions to the uh ballot or recommended the Board of Selectmen asked the four questions to the. To the uh referendum.
Mark, I call the vote.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, let's go ahead and uh vote. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Dave. I think it's a good idea. Okay. Further discussions or motions on the budget as it's uh stands now?
Um, you know, I'd like to talk some more about, you know, what we might want to do on the town side, uh, maybe the trooper. We just took a pretty good whack at AES's budget. Um, I for one, don't like the idea of slashing them and, you know, doing nothing on the town side. So, uh, you know, I'll I'll just do it. And whether it works or it doesn't work, I move that we remove the trooper line item, one hundred and sixty five, one hundred and sixty, seventy six thousand dollar cut. To the town budget, uh, eliminating the trooper.
Okay, Rob, some moves. Anybody have a second?
Okay.
No seconds? Okay. I guess not this time, Rob.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just gonna bring it up.
I think it's absolutely worth uh worth discussing. Yeah.
Mark, might I, might I suggest you prepare. A motion for that at the town budget meeting. And just flat out say to the to the residents, look. As a board, we're not really in favor, but however, since this has been brought up a number of times. Here's what a motion would look like if somebody wanted to make it.
I think that's a good point, Eric. I actually was gonna talk about that in the budget meeting, that that would be one option. It would be, but having a motion statement prepared is probably not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I guess that brings us to back to kind of Jeff's suggestion with the with the a small cut to the road funding. What's the basis for that again? Is that just?
Was there just good faith reduction and that kind of help make some of the fact that we're we just what you said, you know, you. I think you're taking. You can whack at the AES budget. You know, we we should really take another hard look at the town budget. I think we all agree it's it's fairly lean. Um, but I I think that that's uh that's the intention there. The current road improvement fund, just for context, is uh the current approved amount uh is three hundred thousand dollars.
I have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Is it possible to ask these four questions that we're gonna put on a referendum at the actual hearing meeting? And ask for, and we have a vote there. While people are standing there, I know it's not going to be the whole town, but it might give us a little flavor as to. What those people who take the time to come to the hearing are thinking.
I we could, but I think that that's the fact that they have an opportunity to speak publicly about the budget already gives them the opportunity to say. I'm in favor of the state trooper or remove the state trooper. I think I think that that is already satisfied by the public speaking opportunity. That would be my take on it. If we, you know, and and the other thing is that they're. You know, I'm not, I I suppose, I'm I'm not sure that it fits within the purview of the agenda of the uh of the of the meeting, even though it is budget related. I don't know. Somebody may have a different opinion on that. But my feeling is that, you know, people are gonna kind of say what they're gonna say, and you know, they're gonna vote it up or vote it down. And somebody can make a motion to remove the state trooper at the thing or or to reduce the. You know, Tommy or the road funding or something. So Kurt, sorry, you're starting to talk.
Yeah, I'd like I'd like to take uh the first selectman's recommendation and and uh make a motion to cut twenty five thousand dollars from the uh. The town uh capital budget.
From the road improvement fund?
Jeff's Jeff's suggestion.
I'll second that.
Okay, Rob, seconds, okay. Um, further discussion?
I don't really like it, but we gotta, you know.
Yeah, I don't either.
The infrastructure budget is, if anything, lean already, but.
It's um, you know, it's almost a ton out of our budget, so it's it's a decent amount.
It is.
So. Anybody that thinks it's not a lot of money, decent amount.
I'd like to hear from the uh the town administrator.
Eric?
I mean, loo- look, I. I'll live with it. I mean, let's be perfectly honest. If you cut me two hundred thousand dollars, I I would live with it. That's. That's what we do. It's, you know, twenty five thousand dollars is not nothing. I mean, you know, I'm still hoping that we can backfill that from, you know, the grant. I don't know for sure. But I I would. You know, I would hope we can backfill some of it. We just don't know at this point. Um, but if I have to absorb a twenty five thousand dollar cut, I have to absorb a twenty five thousand dollar cut. I mean, remember, we we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. But the town also spends about a hundred thousand dollars, and that three hundred thousand dollars really goes into just surfacing of roads. Um, so in addition to that three hundred thousand dollars. You know, we also put about a hundred thousand dollars a year from town aid road into the road surfacing. Um, and this year, we also applied for and got a steep grant for about a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Which also goes into, is going to be applied this year, you know, for road surfaces. So I I mean, in the grand scheme of things, we can deal with a twenty five thousand dollar cut. I mean, it's, you know, for uh, you know, i- if you if you think about it this way. Out of thirty four miles of road, that means you're gonna do about a half mile less road this year. In terms of crack seal, shim, chip seal. That's what it comes down to. That's what a twenty five thousand dollar cut is, if you look at it that way. Might be your road, you never know.
Oh, it's not about us. It's about the town. Thanks, Eric. It's good context. Um. You know, I I personally have a. I I don't like this idea for the obvious reason. It's just not, not that it's just a half a mile of road, but you know, it's it's just another instance of. Kicking the can down the road. We've done a lot about that. I know we talked about it. You've heard those words out of my mouth several times over the last, you know, couple of months, but. I understand the spirit in which it's done, so um. And I don't like it either, but. Understanding the spirit in which we're trying to. Make some effort here. Anything else from the board discussion about this particular line item? We could increase it as well. Increase that reduction.
I I would just personally say that if we were gonna look for more reductions in capital, I wouldn't pick. The same fund to take a bigger bite out of. You know, maybe take a slice somewhere else, but no, I don't think I want to. We don't really want to slash this stuff. None, we don't want to slash, we don't want to cut any of this, I know. Um, I don't like this at all, but.
I mean, do you have a feel for, you know, in your guts, how much we still have to reduce the budget before it will pass at referendum? You know, can we kind of start with that? I mean, we know if we come in with a zero mill rate increase, it will pass. But what uh, you know, what is your feeling on on what we can practically get through?
I don't. I will say that outright, and I'm not really always comfortable with that being our target. Um, I want to budget appropriately, but the the reality is we're there. I get that. Um, I don't have any particular feeling, just to just for context for everybody. I think where we are right now, if. Make sure I have the numbers plugged in. Yeah, it looks like where we are right now is uh we are at a uh estimated mill rate of thirty six point four six. Which is in percent ill mill rate increase of two point four percent.
And I think the issue that a lot of people um bring up is that the mill rate increase is not the whole shebang because the rebound.
The rebound, yeah, exactly. It's not going to be the net result in everyone's taxes. Uh, again, because some of the personal property tax increases, Eric pointed out, a lot of it's the the uh. The vehicles, the cars and everything that there is going to be some increase there. Um, so. You know, yeah, there's there's going to be an overall increase in taxation for sure.
Mark, can I be recognized quickly?
Absolutely.
Um, good. Listen, I, you know, I appreciate that you guys are hemming and hawing on this. But, you know, in the sake of fairness, you know, the town does need to take a cut. You know, it's not, it it's never in a perfect world, but the budget was rejected. We don't have a hundred percent clear information. We we did hear a lot of people complain about the school budget, but you know, we did hear people talk about the town budget now. And, you know, as Eric said, whatever you caught us, we will work with. It is what it is, you know, that is. That is the role that we take on in municipal services that whatever that budget is, we got to work with it. So. I think in in the sense of fairness, you know, you should cut the twenty five thousand. That's just my take on it.
Good, thanks.
I agree with Adrian on that. Um. Because we've done what we did to the school, I think we need something to show that we're we're trying. On our end. To the town.
Other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. Uh, so the motion is to reduce the uh. The capital fund for road work by twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope. Okay, the motion passes. All right, thank you, Rob. And everyone. All right, so the uh. Sorry, I'm doing a lot of scrolling here. It's a long budget. The uh road improvement fund, which is one dash one hundred dash thirteen dash thirteen oh five dash nine one one is reduced from three hundred thousand. To two hundred and seventy five thousand. Okay, net result, just for the record, is this uh, the new mill rate would be would be in the in the budget as it stands now. Is thirty six point three seven. That is a percent mill in mill rate increase of two point one four. Total taxation increase, again, for the purposes of just clarity, is if I've got all this updated. Now at four point nine percent. It's the overall tax. It's the overall tax revenue, including, you know, the increase in valuation, et cetera. But a mill rate increase of two point one four. Okay. Further discussion on the budget line items?
Give me two seconds, Mark.
You checking my numbers?
No, one, one.
It's not a bad thing. We should always check our numbers, but I, I think this is accurate. Just to remind everybody, this isn't going to get any easier next year because we will not have the two hundred fifty thousand dollars on the fund balance that we're using this year. And we're going to have a further cost reduction or further revenue reduction or educational cost sharing in all likelihood.
Yeah, that is something I want to remind you, next year gets kind of grim because the reason the RAM budget was actually decreased this year to the town was because they gave back a hundred and thirty five or a hundred and thirty because they weren't in session due to COVID. ECS were losing an additional seventy and we're probably not going to have much in surplus to add back. So, you know, potentially we're looking at a budget gap next year already of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we keep level budgets, both town RAM and AES.
So I'll just throw in there, the only silver lining is that we won't have a debt payment on the school bond. That's ninety-ish you can put back out, but still three sixty then, instead of.
Yeah.
We'll be doing this again next year. It's hard to make the cuts, but it's going to be harder next year. We gotta do what we can do.
Or you guys could all be optimist and remind yourselves that RAM also has the adjustment in bonding payment next year. That's a million dollars. So if they don't tack something massive onto the thing, that's a hundred thousand dollar offset. We're going to need to definitely work on that next year with, with the RAM budget, you know, in advance, not at the eleventh hour.
Not at the, yeah, yeah, we need to do a lot of research.
We need to really make a full court press on that exact issue.
Eric, you asked for some time, are you?
No, I was just looking back through the, the latest audit numbers, which I sent you and Jeff to see whether we can increase the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're putting in, but the reality is we really can't.
No, you might have a couple thousand or something.
Right. So that's not going to be a valid source of revenue. And the only other thing to consider, and, you know, I keep going back to it, is the, you know, transfer station revenues. I mean, if you think about the areas where, you know, on the revenue side, the only place we really have to collect more money is a transfer station. It would have to be the Board of Selectmen to do it, that does it, and it's going to be terribly unpopular. But that is one thing you could do to increase revenue to some extent.
Yep.
But get a lot of people mad in the process.
Well, there's two things there. I mean, first of all, as I've pointed out before, that's just another method of taxation. And I understand that, but these people are tying that to, to a service that's being provided. And I don't know how many, how many people then would, and this is something the Board of Selectmen would have to consider is if you increase the fees, does that start making private collection services more and more valuable? And then there are certain people, you know, who are maybe say, you know what, I'll just have it picked up. I don't know that, but it's just, just my comments.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I remember being comfortable with taking us from not charging at all to the level we're at now. Increasing it is kind of another story in my opinion. I actually do have a backup mark, so I know what it costs. It's still a great, much, yeah, I, I think I'm paying a hundred bucks a quarter.
There's probably a pretty classic supply and demand curve there.
There is, gotta be absolute. There's gotta be that tipping point where it's like, well, yeah, I'm paying more, but I don't have to go to the dump every Saturday and put, put everything in the bins. So, yeah.
Sure. And at some point, the reality is people just start throwing it out on the road. We chew up all the public works time picking it up, you know?
Well, I mean, I know you guys are, are kicking it around, but keep in mind too, we're probably going to have to increase that number next year anyways because.
The tipping fees, yeah.
So we're going to have to basically start tying that number to tipping fees, so.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing to do. All right, but it is a little bit off topic here.
Right.
So further line item discussion or motions from Board of Finance? Anything? Well, we can make a motion to have this our recommended budget.
I'll make a motion to have that recommended budget.
Let the budget recommend the budget where it stands.
As it's, as we just discussed.
Okay, thank you, Louise. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Diane seconds. Any discussion further? Okay, let's go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Obstain, Mark.
Thanks, Rob. One abstention, that's Rob.
I was an itemist.
Got it. I think everyone was in favor and we had one abstention, which was Rob, correct? Okay, for the record. All right, thank you, everybody. The motion passes. Okay, any further discussion by the board on the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two? Okay, thank you, guys. Not easy. Hearing no more discussion. Let's move on to agenda item four, which is our closing public speak. Public speaking opportunity. Mandy, you still with us? Can we?
I am here. So, all right, we will go through everyone. First up, Jerry Creme.
I want to thank the Board of Finance for the work you do. Now talking as a Board of Education member. It's a tough place to be in. And I know it's not an easy job for you guys either. I'm wondering if there's something we can do collectively as three boards, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education, and the Board of Finance to get together, starting with the beginning, and see if we can avoid being put into the position we were put into now at the end of the budget, at the end of the year, that we have to come up with a budget. I think this is something we might want to consider working on together, to come up with a solution, to make this a little bit more palatable to everybody. I just would like to see us all communicate with each other in a respectful manner, not start going at each other. We're all residents of the same town. I think Jeff McGuire said it's all our money, whether it's at the Board of Finance, giving it to the Board of Selectmen or giving it to the Board of Education, or whether you build a senior system, yes, it's all our money. But we have to come up with a way to talk to each other. And I don't mean by putting things on Facebook or by talking to the River East. We need to be people with each other. And we need to be respectful of each other, listen to each other, and try to work out a solution that makes this to be a much better process for everyone involved. I thank you to the Board of Finance. I don't envy you. It's a hard job. I know that it is, and I respect you for that. Thank you very much for your.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jerry. Val Bruno.
Hi, thank you. It is a tough job. I have to say I'm a little disappointed that there was not more of a focus on the refusal to use the relief fund, the three hundred nineteen thousand. I am a little disappointed that there is a refusal to use that, that there was no discussion about the surplus that the town had this year, only the surplus that the Board of Ed had because the town did already at a previous meeting reallocate their surpluses accordingly. The thirty seven thousand dollar increase, if that does pass that referendum, that doesn't even cover our increases to our contract negotiations. And we had two contracts this year. It doesn't cover and we'll need to revisit it, but it doesn't even cover our increased cost to the finance director position. Though that'll have to be revisited because thirty seven thousand isn't even enough for that and to maintain our pristine facilities. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed. As Eric always says, both sides would have to make it work no matter what, but it doesn't cover any of those things. So I just wanted those noted. Thanks.
Thanks, Val.
Thanks, Val. Diane Grenier. Maybe she's floating along. Oh, there she is. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you. I appreciate all the work that the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen and everybody's done. Good job. I think you're on the right track. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Kathy and Mike Palazzi.
Thank you, Amanda. We, oh, I do have a few things. The first thing I'd like to say is to the Board of Finance, thank you very much for trying to satisfy the voters of Andover and make this process painless. I think it's very disturbing what I heard today. And also, I would like to believe that the Board of Finance should actually take the current budget before today's cuts back to the town meeting. I do not think they should be cutting the budget again. Additionally, I do believe that that they should not be cutting that road improvements or road work or whatever you want to call that budget. I think our roads are not in the best shape, and I think that Eric has done his best for us. And I do feel that we should not be taking money away from that. I heard today at the beginning of this talk that no one wanted to pit one group of people against another, and that is exactly what has happened today. It's not right to take away from the AES again. The Superintendent Valerie Bruno has asked us all if she could have one more year to stabilize the budget. And she asked us to give her a chance, and I'm willing to do that based on everything that I have heard from her. Additionally, I would like to say that about the trooper, I'm not in favor of all that, of having the trooper removed. When I call the trooper, I am the senior coordinator for the town for twenty three years. And when I call the trooper, because I'm concerned since I've not heard from a senior in a period of time, it is with great relief that the trooper will check out the senior. And in cases that comes rapidly to mind, one senior was dead at home, had no family immediately in the, in the state, within the state to help him. So I was very happy that our trooper did do, took it upon himself to do the wellness check immediately. It wasn't, I'll wait and do it tomorrow. I'm having a coffee. No, it was immediate that he responded. The, and I had a senior that was living in true filth, had no idea what was going on, what kind of day, had no idea day, night or what. And he has advanced dementia, and I'm very pleased that the wellness check was proved this fact and he was taken care of and put into the right environment. The trooper checks on AES every day to make sure the children are okay. I've seen him there and I know that for a fact. He checks in at the polls when voting takes place to make sure that everything's okay, that this is kind of a detention we have right now, just to make sure that there's nothing unpleasant happening at the polls and that everyone is okay, that none of the workers are in danger. He, the trooper runs the deer program at AES and it's very successful, and I saw pictures of that this year. It was an excellent turnout and it was a beautifully done program. It's comforted knowing when my alarm goes off at three AM that he's available to check the property. Doesn't mean that it's going to be the current person. I think his name is Chris, and I have to admit, I don't know Chris. But that's just how I feel. It's feeling good to know that the trooper is here, that we're going to get serviced. When a drunk ran up my front lawn, wrecked the front lawn, the trooper was here within ten minutes after I called nine one one. Made me feel good. And it happened to be our trooper that was on duty that night. It gives seniors the peace of mind knowing that the trooper is here. We're too old and in some cases too frail to handle any problem should anything occur on our property. Should anyone try to rob us, break in, we aren't fit and able to do retaliations. So the bottom line is I do believe that this, what you're proposing now today will fail. And I hope to say that I will be one of the people voting no on Tuesday. So I'm really.
I'd just like to respond that the trooper has not been removed from the budget. It's still in there. It's just one of those things.
I heard you say that, Mark. I wrote it on my note. You did not say that. Is that correct? You're saying you did not take that away?
We did not take out the trooper. The trooper is still in this recommended budget.
It is.
Discuss was the oper, was, was giving that option. That's an option at the town budget meeting. If the town residents feel strongly that that should be removed at the town budget meeting, that that's their chance to make a motion and then take a vote on it. But the Board of Finance is not recommending the removal of the trooper in this budget.
Thank you, Mark, because I did then get confused and I'm old. So I did get confused and, and that was, I do believe that Robert England made the motion and I did think that you had gone through and talked about it. So, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's.
But I still feel that way, Mark. That's what I feel about.
No problem. What I would suggest, though, is that if you, if you're at the meeting on Tuesday, if this motion were to come up and be presented and seconded and therefore discussed, that you may want to make some of the same arguments you just made because I think they're important to be heard. So, but right now this trooper is in the budget. The next, you know, that's unlikely, but I think, but possible that it would be removed at the town meeting. So that would be the time we need to.
All right. And so my question to you, Mark, is, so you removed today, correct, a hundred and thirty eight thousand more from the school, correct?
Correct.
And additionally, did you additionally remove twenty five thousand from the roads?
Correct.
So that was a hundred and sixty three thousand more from the budget?
That's total? Yes.
And additionally, I just want to make sure of my facts. And additionally, did you already take away forty four thousand from the AES last time? And that still stands. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That would be a hundred and ninety three thousand, I believe, from the, a hundred and ninety two thousand from the school. Is that correct?
From the original request, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. All right, next up, Chris Bernard.
Good afternoon, and I just want to thank the Board of Finance. Certainly a difficult discussion. Obviously, as a Board of Education member, you know, certainly I'll, I'll say what Jerry and Valerie said, which is, you know, certainly disappointing from our side, but that means we've got our work cut out for us. And, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can. You know, I think, you know, from our side, you know, I think we've certainly had some missteps and I think they've been commented on here. And, you know, certainly we'll try to address those going forward, but, you know, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
You. Kimberly Person?
Nothing right now. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Adrian Mandeville? Leanne Hutchinson? Leanne, are you there on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay, next up, Shannon Loudon.
Thanks, Amanda, and thank you very much, Board of Finance. I knew that this afternoon.
I know that this afternoon was very difficult, and while I appreciate the difficult jobs we all had to do in coming up with our budgets. I'm very disappointed, uh, by the vote that the Board of Finance just took. The Board of Education, after four budget workshops. Approved an increase that ended up after further reductions to what we had approved at two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. You just approved thirty seven thousand dollar increase. That's seventeen percent of what we asked for, telling you that we needed it. And Valerie's already told you that we approved two contracts. We actually are in the process of approving the second one. It's not going to even allow us to meet the increases that are required. Pay for those contracts. I believe, and I'm not naive enough not to believe that the AES budget was a great part of why people voted down the budget referendum last week. But I also believe that that budget referendum was voted down based on a lot of misinformation that has gone on Facebook, gone into flyers, and has flown around this town. So going forward. Two words that have been wholly misappro. Are transparency and trust. If we wanna trust each other, we're gonna have to be transparent. I do not believe that the town has been transparent about its use and ability to use three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. That was not adequately discussed by the Board of Finance this afternoon. And I don't know to whom that blame falls, but I believe when you've got three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of relief money that AES. Is not gonna get a dime of, and is not coming from the taxpayers, that needed to be better addressed. So I also, like Kathy Pelazzi, will be voting no next on Tuesday, and we'll see what happens. But I do not believe that giving AES a thirty seven thousand dollar increase. When the Board of Education approved what resulted in a two hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase is in any way, uh, meets our need. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Shannon. Mercy Minor?
I just, uh, wanted to say I agree with Jerry Creme. Uh, we need to do a better job at, uh, you know, getting, finding out from the townspeople what they want and. And that's about it. I, I don't, I don't think that this should be the town against the school or the seniors against the town. It shouldn't really be like that. And, um, as far as misinformation, um, we have asked to, um. Have someone highlight what misinformation was actually on the flyers, and, uh, haven't heard anything about that. So, that's it. Thank you, uh, guys for, uh, spending this day in the middle of a Sunday to do this. I know it's really hard. And so you guys are doing really good. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mercy.
Thank you.
Joanne Hubert?
Amanda, yeah, I just wanted to pass along that I think the Board of Finance did, did a great job today. It's not easy, like you've all said. But that's why, um, we're elected to positions of this, to make hard decisions. You know, we've gotta keep emotion out of it, though. I'm at a point in my life that I can keep emotion out of it. My children are grown. Um, you know, but I also have that experience of having them gone through a school system as well as working in a school. And thank you various board members in town for recognizing that when I speak, it's because I am everywhere. I take time to go to your meetings and listen firsthand to your discussions. I'll always be polite. I'll always be thoughtful. Um, sometimes I'll have too much caffeine like earlier today, but, um, I'm a little calmer now. My target amount was two hundred thousand dollars to bring the total increase in taxation to four point five percent. And you came, you know, closer than I thought you might today, so I'm, I'm pleased with this. Um, I also, again, was talking about the emotion, though. I just would like to just go in, be fair objectives, state your case, and then, um. And that's okay. And a couple of people have brought up that grant relief for the town. And I know that Valerie has spoken to this, and maybe this is something that can be considered down the line. Hopefully, you can use it for some of the culverts and all of that, which will help with funds being, you know, either left over or re-appropriated. And then, um, the school has said there might be some needs there that they could use it for. So all is not lost. Um, you know, there might be some funds there that Eric can't use at the town, and then the school can use. So there's always that. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you, Jerry.
Kelly Haggerty. Last but not least.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm sorry to have gotten on so late. I just do appreciate everybody's time. Um, I think the one takeaway I have from this is. We obviously put off work that needed to be done for a long time. I know twelve years living in Andover is considered relatively new in town to many residents. Um, but, you know, twelve years and hoping to make it forever, I, um, at this point. So. I hope that we learned a hard lesson, that we have to keep up with the maintenance if we wanna continue to move forward. Um, and obviously, that means in every way. So. Effectively, if we vote yes, we're choosing roads over education at this point. Um, keeping emotion out of it with three children in the school and also having worked in a school setting my entire adult life. Um. I feel disappointed, but I understand about necessity. In the same respect, I just hope moving forward, we're very aware of the needs of the town, the needs of the school. And the needs of the people who live here. So thank you again, and, uh, it's not an easy job.
Thanks, Kelly.
All right, I think we're all set. Thank you to the Board of Finance. I appreciate you all.
Yeah, thank you, Amanda. We appreciate you and the work you do. Um. That is the second to last item on our agenda. The last is adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn. So moved. I'm sorry, was that Kurt?
Yep.
Okay, Kurt, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I think I heard Louise first, so we'll call Louise as the second. Thank you, David, though. All right, any discussion? I guess I'll just say that, uh, I know that. My, the sales department of the company I work with, the VP of Sales always says, if nobody's happy at the end, you probably landed in about the right place. This process isn't over, but again, I wanna thank everybody for participating. Um, it's not easy, and, uh, we still have a ways to go. Let's, uh, let's hope this goes forward, and, uh, we come together as a town and find our place and and keep going. Like everybody really wants that down deep, so.
Mark, just before we, we, can I, quick question? We, uh, we talked briefly about this, but I don't think really closed the loop on it. The, uh, four advisory questions or three advisory questions we're gonna put on the ballot. You, you said we needed to maybe circle back with the Board of Selectmen on exact wording.
Yeah.
Between now and, uh, when the next referendum is? What's the plan?
You know, that's, that's a good question. Um, I think what I, what I was gonna suggest is. I would recap those questions and send them over to you guys for any, any comment, and then send them over to Jeff McGuire, and then they can consider and add, you know, make any edits. We'll just kinda go back and forth. We would like to get those handled quick.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Make sure that we.
It's a good question. I'm sorry, I meant to, I meant to, uh, comment on that earlier, and I, I think it can be somewhat informal process.
Yep. Mark, I typed up a first draft of that. I'll email it to you right now.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
You can modify it as you desire.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, saves me the time. Any other comments before we adjourn?
See you Tuesday night.
Yeah, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, we have a Board of Finance meeting, remember, so.
Both.
We'll have some, uh, other things to talk about, so.
Fair warning, I gotta bring the kids to the Tuesday night meeting. I don't know.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, so one of the things I think we need to have a discussion with at the Wednesday night meeting. Is what our plan forward is if the next round doesn't fail or doesn't pass, because basically, at this point, if we go.
We're running out of.
Budget meeting, it fails, budget meeting referendum, we still have time to send out tax bills. If we go budget meeting referendum and have another hard fail, we're already past our statutory deadline. We gotta decide where we're going forward with that.
Yep, good point, Eric. Let's make sure it's on the agenda. Or at least talk about it as part of the budget agenda.
I remember, I think we had to do that one time on a, one of my earlier years on the board. Where we ran out of time and we ended up putting out like a provisional mill rate.
Yeah.
Uh, but I actually, at this point, it's a little fuzzy in my memory, so we may have to revisit, revisit exactly what we did there.
And in the end, it's up to the voters.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Right, but if they keep rejecting, we have functional issues. And this is what Eric's talking about. You know, you have some hard deadlines.
Um, yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
All right, and probably worth, uh, worth mentioning at the meeting on Tuesday as well. Okay, everybody, um, I think we're done here. Um, everybody voted, we take a call vote on a German? I think we did, right?
No, I think we did.
No, we didn't. Okay, that's right. That's why we were getting this in. All right, um, any other discussion before adjourning? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark.
Talk to you Tuesday.
See you soon.
Stay.
Bye.